Come say the great honor.
He's, uh, he has a website, Lake Austin. He's got a bunch of, uh... He lives on Franklin Street. He's, uh, he has a website, Lake Austin. He's got a bunch of, uh... So he lives on Franklin Street. It's like, uh, he's doing like seventeen years. He's supposed to be, uh, so it's not ready.
I think so.
Yeah.
That's what I'm checking out.
It's like he's kind of like...
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know, so...
Yeah. You can try and get along with it. Frank's a good news.
Hey Matt, it is on.
It's on?
It's all set.
Thanks, Ed. You do a lot of work every other time.
Test, test, test. Said it was free.
Yes. I know you wouldn't take that for granted. Do you have a ruling?
Stand right here. All right. It is five o'clock and I will, we'll bring this meeting to order. Um, just please bear with us. I am very happy to see you all in warm weather. It's nice to see you. A little bit different weather. Uh, but we are going to try to project our voices as best as possible. I will not ask you to do that. If you would like to speak, I am going to ask that you come to the microphone. Um, at the front of the room and state your name. I'm going to start by asking you all to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Though this is a special town meeting, it is a town meeting nonetheless and the procedures will be followed that we typically follow in March. So if you could take a minute as you came in the front doors, if you are a registered voter in the town of Ospey, you needed to check in with our ballot clerks and receive a voting placard, a set of guidelines, as well as a sheet for secret ballot votes. If you are a registered voter and have not done that, please make your way to the back of the room and check in with the ballot clerks. I would like to go through the guidelines. We go through these relatively quickly. It feels like yesterday that I was standing up here for the first time, but been up here for a few times. These, these years are passing quickly. So if we look, we need to just follow the same guidelines. Like I said, every registered voter must possess the voting card. Please make sure that you're speaking through the moderator as well as being recognized by the moderator. This is a special town meeting. It is a one-issue meeting. I do understand, because I do have social media, that there might be, um, some contested beliefs here. So please make sure that we are sticking to the warrant specifically and that you are speaking through me and not to each other. There will be no cross-debate. Those wishing to speak must line up behind the microphone. Please make sure that you are stating your name for the record. The only exception to being at the microphone is to move or second an article, but we do need to know who you are for the record. We've gone through all of this. Again, I want this to be civil. I want to refrain from using any names, name-calling, foul or abusive language. I also will ask that we not be redundant and say the same arguments over and over. We will only recognize one speaker to speak at a time. Others, please, the peanut gallery needs to stay quiet so everybody can hear, especially when anybody up here without a microphone is speaking. All right, the rest of it, I think you're all very familiar with. If you have any questions, let me know. If you would like this to go to secret ballot, again, also let me know. Um, we do have the paperwork to make that happen. Of course, I can be overruled. There's a first time for everything. That only takes a simple majority. Um, so, just so you're aware of that. Does anybody have any questions specifically about the guidelines? All right. The other thing that we need to do before we get started is recognize, are there any non-registered voters that would, or non-residents that are going to wish to speak tonight? All right. Matt?
Matt Sawyer, town administrator.
Matt Sawyer is our town administrator. Are there any objections to having him speak? Thank you. And we also have Matt Surge, our town council. I hope there are no objections. Any objections? No, okay. Is there any other non-registered voter or non-resident wishing to speak?
Madam Moderator, T.J. Eldridge.
Oh, T.J. All right. Any objections to T.J.? All right. Any of you, non-registered or non-residents, wishing to speak? Okay. Great. That makes it easy. Um, I'm going to introduce our panel up here. We have Kelly Skehan, of course, to my right. She is the one keeping the record, so please make sure she can hear anything that you are saying. Um, I have Sue Simpson to my left. Brian Keys, Jonathan Smith. These are our select board. We have Matt Sawyer, our town administrator, Matt Surge, our town council, and T.J. Eldridge, our public works director. All right. Yes, Mr. Smith?
I'd like to open with a comment whenever you're ready.
Okay. That is all that I have, so you're welcome to open. I will recognize you. Speak loud enough for the whole body to hear. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the special town meeting. It's a rather unusual town meeting, but it's a first time for everything. I'm going to give a little brief history of how we got here. So going back sometime early March, the Board of Selectmen voted to demolish 15 Multenville Road, a town-owned building. Part of that process is an enabling statute. That means the governing body decades ago gave the Selectmen the authority to buy, sell, or demolish real estate. That's RSA 4114A. Part of that process is, um, once the board decides to move forward, it needs a planning board and conservation commission review. We sent it to them. We had that joint meeting. They reviewed and both Planning Board and Conservation Commission unanimously approved to support the Board of Selectmen's plan with the town-owned building at 15 Multenville Road. Um, the next step was a public hearing. We had that public hearing to demolish 15 Multenville Road. At the second public hearing, just before, we received a petition by 50 people to call a town meeting. At that second public hearing, there was no further input on that subject of demolishing 15 Multenville due to the call of a town meeting. So at that, the Selectmen made a motion to call a special town meeting. Here we sit. The Selectmen are thinking broadly with demolition of this building. The building, I understand, has history. It may have sentimental value. It did serve a purpose at its time. But we are looking forward. We are thinking, we are thinking in a broader sense of how to revitalize downtown. I know people say, "Oh, you don't need any more parking because lots are always empty." If you go to Hannaford on a Sunday morning, it's empty. If you go there on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, it's packed. That's how it is down here. When the train station is, is full of people eating, there's nowhere to park. Kids in the playground. So the goal of the board is to bring in farmers' markets to the gazebo park area. Bringing additional concerts. Many of you know I have a bill, I'm a state representative for, for Ospey, and I have a bill that's, it's going to the governor's desk. Passed the House, the Senate unanimously. To hopefully bring a rail trail to center Ospey. Which, this is going to be the hub of the beginning. If that happens, the parking demand is going to outstrip even what we're looking to add at the location where the building is now. So this is a positive view for the future. We're not, I understand the history and the sentimental value, but we need to get past that and think about the future with what we're looking to do here. This is for the betterment of everyone in this town. It's not narrowly focused for any one group of people. This is for everyone to come to downtown, maybe spur business activity, increase tourism. People need a purpose to come here, and that's what this is all about. So, other than that, I think we can...
Before we get too much further, usually we just give opening remarks and then speak to specific warrants that we've opened, but we have not yet put a motion on the floor. So let's start with that and then we can have you guys speak if anybody else wants to speak and then questions and comments from the town. So the article on the floor that we are looking to discuss, Article One, to see if the town will vote to demolish the town-owned building at 15 Multenville Road. Is there a motion on the floor? Thank you. And is there a second? Thank you. So the article has been moved and seconded and now we'll open discussion on the article, which Jonathan has begun. Is there anybody else up here who wants to speak to the article? So if you would like to come and speak, ask a question, make a comment, voice your opinion, please come to the microphone, state your name for the record, and then you may speak once you are recognized. Now go to the microphone to be recognized. Dennis, go to the microphone.
I'm Dennis Jumper. I'm a third year on my life except for service in college. And this town's important to me. I'm not here to argue whether you have the right to tear down a building or not. That's, I guess, a topic of course. The problem I have, we have town meetings and it seems to me that you must have been thinking about this or had something done for this because it's all done so suddenly. My question is this, right? I've seen buildings moved in this town before, larger than that. One was sold, one was given away. It didn't cost the town anything to move that building. Okay? We have Constitution Park. If you look into the possibility of moving that building, Constitution Park, put it on a foundation, future use. Talking about future use here. I'd tear down a perfectly good building. I'd look at that building. Seriously. They put a lot of work into that building about twenty, twenty-five years ago. So it's in good shape. But why not use it? Why not sell it? Why should it cost the town money to tear it down? Exhaust all the options first? I have to ask you, did you do any of those options? Because it's a spare room.
Thank you, Dennis. Who would like to respond?
T.J., do you want to elaborate on the condition of the building with some of the wooden air here?
So part of my job is to have all the, all the buildings, under-government buildings, and to take care of them. And as I've stated before, the Ospey Town Buildings, there's a lot of them that need a lot, a lot of repair. But when you have a certain amount of money, with plumbers being a hundred and twenty dollars an hour, electricians being a hundred and twenty dollars an hour, if you have ten buildings and you spread that over ten, you can just maintain them. You can't do anything to improve them or to prevent rot or anything like that because you have to use that money just to maintain them. Just like when the air conditioner went out the other day in the freight house. That costs money. Well, this property here, when you go in, you walk inside the building, there's the floor slopes. Can't really run a transit in there, but by level from one end to the other, about eight inches. In the back right corner, that was on fire at one time and they had sprayed water in there. And that whole back wall, you can push your finger through it. It's all ripped out if anyone would like to see it. I've brought people in there before to show them. Uh, the paint on the outside, it really needs all new siding on the outside. It's a building that's not used. There's nothing, no one uses it. And for, to, to someone's point about bringing it to Constitution Park, I, you could probably use the building, but when you moved it, it would be in two pieces because right dead center, that's two buildings. So you'd have to move it in two pieces. It really, Constitution Park has this, this shack over there. I really don't know. That would have to be something the Board of Selectmen votes on or the people. But the building is not in perfect shape. I can, I can tell you that for a fact.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to respond? All right. Additional public questions or comments? Please come to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Malita Dixon. I know no one's thinking about Christmas, but this girl is. If you do not tear the building down, will there be electricity for the tree lighting for Santa Claus when he comes at the parade? I know you're not all thinking about Christmas, but this girl is 24/7.
I think that's a good question.
Yeah, there is.
T.J.?
There's electricity there now. So there will be. We had to have electricity because the, as you know, the park, we're trying to preserve the park and there was no irrigation there, so we had to hook the power back up for irrigation.
You made this girl and Santa very happy. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment or questions? Please, come to the microphone, state your name for the record.
My name is Robert Bowie and I live here in Center Ospey. I think that a lot of the townspeople feel that things were a little bit underhanded. We did have the town meeting in March. It should have been on a warrant article. Should have been fair and square in the legislative body to vote on that. The Select Board feels that we don't have a voice other than the town meeting. They've made the statement in plenty of the select meetings. I think they've forgotten the procedure and I think that the legislative body first of the guys who has final word. I think that's what we hired them to do, is be here for the call of people to be drawn.
Madam Chair, can I just respond to that?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bowie. So I know there's this, this conception or this, I don't know, view that we should have put this on the warrant in March. We didn't know who was going to be here come March. Brian wasn't a Selectman at that time. We had an outgoing Selectman. I was up for reelection and we had Sue. So that was not a discussion until after the election by this board. So you can't put something like, you can't put something on the warrant back in January for who's going to be here in March. That, that's, that's not how it works. It should be the board that's in play who put it on the warrant. So now we have the board that's in play who put it on the warrant. Excuse me, discussed it after the election, after Brian and I both won the election. And here we are today.
Can I just monitor that?
At the microphone. But again, we're keeping it to this particular...
My name is Robert Bowie again and I'm here to say to Mr. Smith, the rail trail has been going through the house in the center for quite some time, a lot longer than March or January. This program that he's got that he wants to bring through has been in the works for a lot longer than just a few months. So there has been a plan for quite some time. It could have been put in a warrant article. Any good idea it's worth the town voting on about Jolene?
Madam Moderator, I don't want to...
Uh, no. We're done. We, we are at a town meeting. It is a warrant article. We are having the opportunity to vote. It's not March, it's June. So we will continue to discuss the warrant as written. Is there any other discussion on the warrant? Please come to the microphone. You don't have to raise your hand. You can just come to the microphone. And yes, Ms. Parker, of course.
Lynn Parker, the non-state owner. I'd like to ask about public restrooms. I was kind of hoping that that building could be converted somehow. You already have your water and you have your septic in there. That it could possibly be used for that purpose. We do not have public restrooms available 24/7. Town hall is open at certain times of the day. Your, um, freight house does have restrooms in there when that's open for business. Your public businesses, your restaurants and so forth, limit their cus, for their customer use because they're paying for the water and the sewer and they don't have the extra money. It's not public sewer system that could accommodate. So you have a lot of visitors here who hit Hannaford's, Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, just for public restrooms. So I really would like to see something done to that.
Any, do you want to speak to that?
Yep. Thanks, Lynn. Um, I think, yes, I think eventually a public restroom is a wise idea to place into that park. I don't think that building is the correct avenue to, to place it. One, ADA compliance. That building is not ADA compliant. If you build a restroom, it should be a single small location on a pad with a nice wide door that's a little kind of reel jack and reel right in, use the facility and leave. That would be the correct path for the future, not using an old, old building to do that. But I do agree with that.
Ms. Teager, Center Ospey. And I just want to clarify whether the building is there or not that the Ospey Main Street will still continue. So if anyone that was concerned that it was tear down, that the roof would not be there anymore. It can be altered. Oh, sorry. So... Whether, um, the building is there or not, the old home, I'm not, the Ospey Main Street will still be able to be and be repaired, but it won't be cut down. Just so everybody knows. Thank you for that.
Any other public comment or questions? Come to the microphone if you would like to speak.
I have no doubt, Dallas.
I have a question. Can you hear me? Just kind of move closer to her, that's all. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I just have a question about the plan. Two things. I've heard that there's a plan for the future. I'm not exactly sure what the plan is. And secondly, do you have a cost for the demolition? I haven't heard either one.
Thank you.
So I'll, thank, thank you, Dallas. So the plan is what I just spoke about. Bring in, bring in farmers' markets down in there, bring in more concerts, the rail trail, just enhancing economic activity. That's a vision, Dallas. You've got to start there. And if people can't park, you're, you're dead in the water. I'll let T.J. answer to the cost of the demolition.
T.J.?
Go ahead. We'll have the highway department tear it down and put it in dumpsters. We have a guy with a ninety-yard dumpster that were, has worked for us before and he'll haul it away. And all, it all depends on weight, Dallas. So I, you know, the estimate was it's between fifteen hundred and two thousand a load and there's like one and a half, two loads there. So do the math out that way, but then there'll be the, I would say that would take probably a day to haul away. And, um, then the tipping fee, but that was the tipping fee added into the haul. So...
Can I ask another question?
Yes, Dallas.
So the, um, so once that's all cleared out, the plan is parking lot, what about the, the telephone pole and the sidewalk there in front of there? Are we going to make a driveway there? Do you need to get in and out?
So there actually be a driveway that goes in right before the pole, right where you go in now, the driveway. The parking will work, uh, run all the way along that property where the building is. And what the, the board has talked about is making the road actually go. We actually own a lot further back, behind the gazebo and you'll be able to go one way, right out and around and come out in our dirt lot, which we will have paved over by the water and sewer department, which I'm sure anyone that works here from OCC will be happy if that's paved because in the springtime, that's a mud hole. So if we can get that dug out, put the correct basin and get some pavement on that, it'll be a good in around there and OCC will also have parking for their employees.
Yeah, I think you asked another question.
Thanks, Dallas.
So, Robert Bowie again. How many parking places would we gain by making that building work?
Twenty, twenty-two?
Twenty-two, I believe.
Twenty-one or twenty-two?
Okay, so the cost of the building, I think, originally was appraised somewhere above a hundred thousand dollars and now it's lowered down to about twenty-four, twenty thousand. So twenty thousand for twenty parking spots? How does the town, and then that's not including all the cost of the payment and everything that goes down. How does the town really kind of get its money back from the investment of twenty parking spots?
Jonathan? Thank you, Mr. Bowie. And that's, that's economic activity. That's having people come here and spend money. New money coming to town, spending money. That's economic activity. Not the same, not the same circle of money going round and round. You want new money in the town. That's the lifeblood. I mean, ask any restaurant owner in this town.
Mr. Fishburne?
I, I actually, it's coming up to follow up to that, but I'm going to. So I have a couple things. Uh, first one being to Mr. Bowie, we can actually put dollars and cents to the revenue of our business in town by a parking spot, much as a restaurant would do to the value of a seat in their restaurant per year. Uh, so more parking would definitely be a benefit to this town, even for Saphouse, because far around the corner, it definitely has a revenue and an ROI. The goal would be to attract people to come in and walk around the town and spend money. As a past economic development share, it was always our goal with the sidewalks to create connectivity for the community to walk and be in amongst the town itself safely as opposed to walking mainly in the streets. Uh, and of course, building that park that a playground they had put in years ago is also an attraction. Uh, all of that equals ROI. There aren't very many businesses in the town. In fact, one is leaving, two apartments are going in it, which hasn't, uh, been made public, but that's about to happen. But as a business owner in this town for the last fifteen years, I can tell you, uh, there's ROI for parking businesses. The reason I came up here is, if you don't mind taking a moment to clarify a couple things. I understand that Main Street is the only, uh, organization still working out of there. The EDC has left months ago. Uh, is that correct?
Jonathan?
The building's vacant. There's no one in the building now.
Right. Because the town is still in it. But before that, it was just Main Street.
Correct.
Thank you. So I assume they have twelve meetings a year that take place, uh, in that building. Obviously, they have events outside, but it sounds like none of that's really going to be disturbed because there's electric, water for the irrigation. The gazebo's still going to be lit. We're going to have Santa. Don't worry, kids. For those twelve meetings, what does it cost the town to heat it, put water in it, to just general maintenance ballpark figure? Dollars and cents to me goes a long way. Misty made a comment that Main Street isn't going anywhere. I'm a big believer that the board is in, in us, not in a building. This town likes to collect old buildings. And I feel like, I think this is important to understand the cost associated. Yeah, it's a hundred thousand dollar building, but it is costing us monthly. If you could just touch on that, that would be great. Thank you.
T.J.?
So the electrical bill, we did look back and try to get an average and as you know, that's hard because electric prices have changed. It averages and it's going to be kind of broad in the winter, between two fifty and four hundred dollars. They range for the wintertime in between a hundred and ten to two hundred and fifty in the summer. So that's kind of what the electrical is. Um, we do, obviously, we're still going to have to plow it We do, obviously, we're still gonna have to plow it if it's a parking lot, we plow it. We've had to put hot water tanks and just normal ma, you know, maintenance stuff. That would be a hard dollar value to put on because you might go four months, nothing happened to it, but you might go three months and we do. We've had to do some sheet rock in there when it leaked, had to do some re-insulation when it leaked. Just trying to think back of anything, I don't know if you can think of anything else.
The other utilities, I don't, you know, phone or internet.
We've done some work on the ramp on the outside with some pressure treated.
Shoveling that ramp alone is...
Yeah. I mean, it's mostly the electrical bill. And the water and sewer is, if anyone is on the water and sewer department, they know what the bill is and it's not a lot different from an average bill. So, that's the cost. I would say between an average of 300 a month the whole year is what I would say.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Pies?
Yeah, it's hard to respond to Ash. I, I had $3,200 and I usually hesitate to speculate, but if they had 12 meetings a month, it would be almost, or 12 meetings a year, you'd be looking at almost $300 per meeting. So the savings in that utility is spread over the course of time with a parking lot, you would have a return on investment.
Yes, Mr. Bowie.
I'm Mr. Doyle, Center Ospey. Quick question here. Can you talk about being parked towards the center of town more accessible for businesses in the center of town? Why not not sell the police station? Tear the building down, that's gonna give you at least 50 parking spots if you're judging a small building, there's 20 spots. And it's right next to the rail trail, right next to all the businesses, the South House, the monkey station, even the library or the school, if anybody... I would think that would be a more cost-effective or more income-based to the town, bringing more people. Because I think if they're gonna be parking up towards the gazebo to walk down to the South House, you might have some elderly people that aren't gonna walk that far. You might have people that are physically challenged, that are unable to walk that far. I think closer to a rail trail, closer to the center of town, there'd be more of the income to the town, more incomes to the business. Yeah, you could put it this way.
Thank you. Anybody wanna address that?
Thank you, Mr. Doyle, for the question. The police department, are you, hang on, can I ask a question on that? Is he implying that we knock down the police department? Attorney General?
Old police station, yeah.
Are you implying that we knock that building down?
Would it be, you're gonna gain even more parking if that building's gone. I know you're, we're trying to sell it right now.
Right.
With the interest rates right now, I think it's gonna be very hard to sell that. You're tripling your interest rates that you would normally pay on a, on any kind of business. If you were to tear that building down, level it out, make it a nice big parking lot, you're right next to the playground, you're right next to the rail trail that you were hoping to get in, which I think would be a great idea to get in. And you're more centrally located to the center of town. And I think it would be easier access for anybody that needs to get to any of the businesses, even to the library or the school, the post office. Everybody knows to get into the post office, it's hit and miss on finding a spot and pull it in. But at least it's a little closer. That was my, my thing. It's something to think of.
And your idea is not a bad one, but unfortunately, that 400,000 or so we're hoping to get is gonna come back to the taxpayer to offset the cost of the new police department.
I, I understand that. We also said that we had a surplus of...
Okay, let's not go back and forth.
No, no, you see, it's a $2 million surplus.
Again, if you wanna make that point, the microphone will be recognized. Jonathan, do you wanna expound on any of that?
No, it's, it's an idea vision, I'm not gonna say it's wrong, but you can title it a police department.
But do you wanna explain if you have considered it and if you've not lied?
Yeah, okay, I'll elaborate a little bit. So, that police department, I understand the increase in volume of parking, that would be a huge addition in parking. I can't predict, I don't think anyone can here, how many spots would be needed if the rail trail did happen. Maybe we'll, if that rail trail happens, we're gonna be hoping that we had that, that parking lot. I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. So you're not wrong, but to demolish that building would be extraordinarily expensive. It's all brick. That would be a huge cost to dispose of. I mean, I couldn't even begin to tell you what that would cost, being that it is brick and it's... I think it was lost, I think. Yeah. They're a foot thick or something. So, the idea of more parking is great, but is the need there? I don't know. I don't know.
Yes, Dennis?
Yes. You said something a couple minutes ago, it's gotta be worth the word. The taxpayer in this town, and I think everybody in this room should understand this, that piece of property sits upon top of an oil field, basically. There were three or four, 30 or 40,000 gallon tanks. It dripped continuously as I was a kid going up there. I'm guessing there's thousands of gallons they put in the ground. It contaminated the stream, those hoop squares and other railroad tracks. My question is this, you're gonna plan to put a road behind the gazebo. I want everybody to remember this, you've gotta go through an oil sample test. You've gotta find out what you've got back here, because you have no idea what's at cost.
What, you started to say that you had a question?
No, my question is, did they do that?
Okay.
You've done a soil test. I'm gonna put a road in, you gotta dig. Once you hit that oil, you're gonna clean it all. So I'm not against this idea, okay? I wanna see this town grow, but the taxpayer, I've dealt with this before, the Minnesota paper, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars to remove all that soil and the place.
Follow. Dennis, people can't hear you because you're not at the microphone.
I just wanna make a comment. I'm not against this program, I'm trying to do something for our community. I'd love to see it. The taxpayer, I don't want us to get hit with this huge bill on a vinyl cleanup before we can use the spot. So, you better be careful about being honest. So, it's true.
Jonathan, can you respond?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wood. So I, I appreciate the concern of the old oil tanks that were there, but this has been a public park for 20 years. I would think if there's a hazard there, we shouldn't even be there now. So we're, we're not gonna be going in there and excavating out the site and digging pits. We're gonna be going in there, taking the building down, bringing in some fill and some paving, and possibly putting a retaining wall on the back. So, if these oil tanks are a true hazard, we never should have bought that property when we did back in, when given by...
I know, it's been inhabited for 20 years.
Yeah, it's been inhabited for 20 years by the townspeople. We shouldn't have bought it 20 years ago if it truly was a hazard. So I, I don't, I, I appreciate what was there, the comments, but I don't see it being a hazard. It wasn't a hazard for the last 20 years.
Do you remember this conversation?
Sure, I will. Thank you, Dennis.
And truly, no, he had a question. Was a soil test done? Was a soil test done?
We did notify DES, they had no concern about the site. We also notified them and had the asbestos testing on the building itself. So, DES is fine.
That's what we need to know. Ms. Katie?
Katie, I'm a member of the cemetery board of trustees. We have an office in that building. We moved out of it. The only thing basically we had, we stored our records. We had a computer that got used sometimes. We had maybe six or seven meetings in a year there, because we don't meet in winter time, not a lot of activity in cemeteries then. And, but you wanna talk about problem with the parking? The problem with the parking there, even for the three of us, to get our cars in and be able to get our cars out without running into each other, the ramp or the wall, is ridiculous. I am a firm believer that this building is not worth the effort of keeping it up.
Thank you. Mr. Reins?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. James Reins from Center Ospey. In the question about the, the oil contamination, when all of those tanks were removed, they had to go through a process. And once you are compliant with closure, if there is an exposure, if you find something that was not known, I think, I'm not up to date on it because I've stepped away from that, but it was like a $5,000 deductible, and then the state odd fund covers any contamination. So it's not gonna be hundreds of thousands. The worst situation would be that it got covered by the odd fund after a $5,000.
Thank you, Mr. Reins.
My name is Stephen Brown. How many parking spots have we gained again?
He said 21.
21. So saying that we already have an issue with parking already, why didn't you propose a rail trail before making sure we can accommodate parking for more people? Come to the town to exacerbate a problem that's already existed.
Mr. Smith?
Sure, thank you for the question, Mr. Brown. So a rail trail, so legislation is no guarantee. Yeah, it's an idea, you start with an idea. That was submitted back in the fall of last year. There's an extraordinary legislative process that it takes to become law. So, when this all began, we had no idea where this was going. I didn't know if it was gonna pass the House or pass the Senate or go to the governor. We're at that point now. So, there's a lot of unknowns along the way, now we have certain...
Mr. Brown, do you have a follow-up?
I do, I, I have a bunch of questions. So, this building was poorly maintained, in your words. Who's in charge of taking care of this building? Why is it such bad disrepair?
TJ?
I, I explained that before. When you have, we have 12 buildings, we actually have 16 buildings in the town. And to keep taxes down, you can't have a huge amount of money in your budget. And with all unknowns about the year, like when the heating, heating system went at the library, you have to have money in there right up till the end of the year. But when you get into November and December and you know you're not gonna have any more issues and you do have a little bit of money left over, if anyone in here is trying to do anything, whether it's plumbing, heating, electrical, anything, you can't get anybody. So when you have it planned out for December and you wanna have someone come in to make an improvement, whether it is painting it or it is to improve the floor, jack it up and boost the floor, or like what we're trying to do now at the library, put a whole new heating system in because we're burning 275 gallons of oil, you have to have a warrant article and do that. I mean, you can have whatever you want if anyone's willing to pay for it. You're gonna have to have a huge budget and, that's what I'm saying, you can't have all these buildings and have what we have for a budget to maintain them. We barely make it by with what we have to maintain.
Isn't the maintenance part of the budget for all the secure buildings in the town?
Yeah, the government building's budget is to maintain all the buildings in town.
I mean, the bathroom right here has a load assignment, right here in Town Hall.
Yeah, if you went with me for a couple weeks, you'd see how many issues are throughout the town. That happened the other day. We're trying to get our plumber here to fix it.
And let's avoid the cross debate if you have specific questions, let them be answered before following.
So, these costs of maintenance for this particular building, was that prepared for before the building was turned over to the Ospey Main Street program? Shouldn't it have been?
No, prior to me, I would have no idea.
Isn't it a public use?
Is that, I, we can't hear you, you can't speak up. Jonathan?
So this building hasn't had a public use in probably 10 years by the town. So, this building existed long before I was a selectman or any other board members. As a matter of fact, anyone long before TJ and Matt were even here. So we can't give you the past history, we're giving you the condition of where, where we sit with it right now. We can't make up for the past, we're dealing with what we have here in the present.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
So the police station would make a perfect spot for a community building. There's nothing for kids to do around here, and it would be great for a public bathroom. It's, meets the perfect idea for a handicap accessibility.
Mr. Brown, I'm just gonna stop you because we're here to discuss only the building at 15 Moultonville. We can't discuss the plans for the PD.
I was just elaborating on what he said. All right, I'll move on. The rail trail, some of the land on the rail trail is not owned by the state and is deeded for railroad use only. How are you getting around this?
That's a rail trail question, you want me to answer that, relatives, relatives?
A rail trail or railroad or...
Well, if, if the point is that parking is for the rail show, then yes.
Yep, so DOT will always own Corridor 19, the rail line. They own it all the way down, even where Boston Sand and gravel use it. DOT owns it. DOT will always have a right, that's with every rail bed in this state that is a rail trail, to reclaim it and make it active rail. It's never gonna become active rail. I spoke with Deputy Commissioner of DOT personally, and you're never gonna see a train from here, but DOT will always remain ownership of it.
Where is it gonna stop?
In Madison by Route 113. 10 miles.
So I contacted DES, and they said that the only time that the town contacted them about anything was asbestos. Nothing about mold, nothing about lead and nothing about oil. Can you explain that?
I have no comment to that. I don't know who you spoke to.
Can you explain what, who you spoke to and what your conversation with DES was?
When we talked about demolishing 15 Moultonville Road, they had no concern at the same. Mold is not a regulated substance in the state. The health officers here, we get complaints from tenants all the time, I have mold in my house. There's no regulations on mold. There's no control over mold. All we do is advise ventilation, clean up water issues, stop water leaks. Mold is not a regulated substance in this state.
Well, it's my understanding, one of the reasons that we're tearing this building down is because it's full of mold.
Correct.
Toxic mold.
Mold is not good for you, but it's not regulated.
So who did the testing and who said that there was mold in there?
You can visually see mold, you can smell mold.
Just because you can see it doesn't mean it's dangerous.
I never heard of healthy mold.
Have you heard of mushroom?
All right. Anything else about...
Okay. Madam Moderator, can I call the question on this?
You can call the question. So there's been a motion to call the question, that means to come to an immediate vote. But first, we need to decide if we are all ready to call the question. And that requires a two-thirds majority vote to end debate and vote on the article. Does anybody have any questions about what that motion is? All right. So I, we are gonna call the question. I'm gonna ask that you raise your placards if you want to end debate and come to an immediate vote on the article. So all those in favor of calling the question, raise your placards. All those opposed. Okay. That is a two-thirds majority, calling the question passes. I will reread the article to see if the town will vote to demolish the town-owned building at 15 Moultonville Road. All those in favor, please raise your placards.
I didn't have a question, I'm sorry.
Can you make a question?
I didn't have a question, I'm sorry.
Placards down, we'll start. So we're voting on the article. The motion to call the question has been moved. We voted, two-thirds majority said yes, we wanna call the question. That means we come to an immediate vote on the article as written. I read the article as written and now we're voting. Please reread the article. The article says, "To see if the town will vote to demolish the town-owned building at 15 Moultonville Road." That is the article that we're voting on. All those in favor of the article, raise your placards. All those opposed. That passes. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting as this is the only article. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? The meeting is adjourned.